Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 24th, 2022 City Council Meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Mayor Kalmak.
Here.
Mayor Protem Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Now, the approval of the agenda and waiver for reading resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item?
Um, sorry. Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull Item I, the Tennis Center PSA.
Okay, Item I then. Anyone else? Okay, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, three supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to the council member and made available to the public on the city's website.
Great, thank you. I'll now call for motion and a second for the items not pulled.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Could we give a please?
Was that Councilmember Masalavet, the second?
Yes.
I, yeah, oh, I'm, yes.
I'm voting, yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Five oh. Uh, next, we're going to have an update from Assistant City Manager Patrick Gallegos on redistricting. Patrick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kalmak. Uh, tonight, I'm actually going to pass this presentation along to Management Analyst Lauren Berish, uh, who is with us tonight. Uh, Lauren, can you provide us with the redistricting update?
Sure. Thanks, Patrick. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And this evening, I will be providing an update to you regarding the finalized maps that were redrawn by the California Citizens Redistricting Commission using the data from the 2020 census. And these new maps, um, will take effect during the 2022 election season. And I will also provide an update on the Orange County Board of Supervisor map, which took effect earlier this year. Next slide, please. So first, let's talk about congressional maps. Seal Beach is currently located within the 48th Congressional District, which is represented by Congresswoman Michelle Steele. And Seal Beach will now be located within the 47th Congressional District. You can see the current is on the left and the new redrawn district is on the right. And the Citizens Commission released a final report that you can view online. And they provide a little bit of context on what they were hoping to do with the redrawn map. So I'll provide that as well. The Commission report states that this district includes a portion of Orange County, including the whole cities of Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, Irvine, Newport Beach, and Seal Beach, and portions of Laguna Beach, Laguna Hills, and Laguna Woods. Splits were made to balance population while considering communities of interest. Communities in this district share socioeconomic characteristics and have common interests in coastal issues, including water quality and beach erosion. So again, the current District 48 on the left and the new district for the 2022 cycle on the right, District 47. Next slide, please. Now, let's look at the state senate maps. So Seal Beach is currently located within District 34, currently represented by Senator Tom Umberg. That's here on the left. The new finalized map, um, is located on the right. District 36 is where Seal Beach will be located. And the Commission report states about this district. Senate District 36 is based on nesting Assembly District 70 and Assembly District 72, which we'll talk about in the next slide. It includes portions of Los Angeles and Orange Counties, including the whole cities of Artesia, Cerritos, Cypress, Dana Point, Fountain Valley, Wine Gardens, Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, La Palma, Los Alamos, Newport Beach, San Clemente, Seal Beach, Stanton, and Westminster, and portions of the cities of Buena Park and Garden Grove. The district's configuration is partially the result of Voting Rights Act obligations in two neighboring districts. The district also preserves the integrity of immigrant communities that share significant ties, including language and culture. Additionally, residents of this coastal district share concerns related to pollution, coastal erosion, climate change, and oil spills. This district is, also reflects input from inland communities in Orange County, including Little Saigon, which share economic interests with the beach cities. Next slide. For the final map that we'll look at tonight, that was created by the California Citizens Commission, is for State Assembly. So Seal Beach is currently located within District 70, or excuse me, District, um, yes, District 70. There is an error on my slide here. Um, District 72. So Seal Beach will now be located in, and that's currently represented by Assemblywoman Janet Nguyen. So Seal Beach is now going to be split between the two different districts, District 70 and District 72, as you can see, um, on the map. And the Commission report states that Assembly District 70 consists of portions of Orange County, including the whole cities of Westminster, Stanton, Los Alamos, Fountain Valley, and Garden Grove, as well as portions of the cities of Seal Beach, Santa Ana, and Huntington Beach. The cities in Orange County were split due to Voting Rights Act obligations in a neighboring district and to balance population while considering communities of interest, including preserving the integrity of the socio-economically cohesive community of Little Saigon. Communities in this district share concerns related to economic development, language access, education, housing. Residents in this district share school systems and socioeconomic characteristics. And then regarding Assembly District 72, they state that this consists of portions of Orange County, including the whole cities of Laguna Hills, Elisa Viejo, Newport Beach, Laguna Woods, Laguna Beach, and Lake Forest, as well as portions of the cities of Seal Beach and Huntington Beach to balance population while considering the communities' interests. This is a largely coastal district that shares economic, environmental, and economic interests. So the last map we'll talk about tonight, next slide, please, is for the Orange County Board of Supervisors maps. So in Orange County, the Board of Supervisors is responsible for drawing the supervisory districts. And the new maps actually went into effect earlier this year. So up until recently, Seal Beach was located within the 2nd District and represented by Supervisor Katrina Foley. And now Seal Beach is located within the 1st District, which you can see on the right-hand side, and is represented by Supervisor Andrew Doe. Next slide, please. Additional information can be located on the official sites of the California Citizens Commission, as well as, um, the site of the Board of Supervisors. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any council questions?
Yes, Mayor, I had a question. So our present, when it comes to congressional, state senate, state assembly, we will keep our present representative until after the election? And then whoever runs in our new district will become, or whoever wins in our new district will become our new representative. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I was, I am disturbed by the, um, gosh, is it the congressional or the assembly map? That splits, um, Seal Beach into two parts.
Assembly, yes.
Yeah, the assembly map. I was pretty unhappy about that. Um, it makes it just, it makes it more difficult for us in terms of working with the Assembly Office, um, to ask for help, to get information, because we have to deal with two different, or two different offices. Uh, I know we did everything we could to try and change that. I just wanted, uh, to make the comment that, uh, we did try and get the entire city into one district and it didn't work. So, um, that's, that was my comment. I'm, I'm not happy about the lines in general on any of them, but that was the most concerning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, uh,
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, thank you. I just totally agree. I think the State Assembly is not a very good map with the dividing Seal Beach. Do, is there any, uh, reasoning that you, we heard on why they did that?
So the, the reasoning, um, thank you, Councilmember, the reasoning that they state, um, would be that the different portions of the cities of Seal Beach, there, you know, whole cities as well as different portions, including Huntington, which as you can see, um, is also split the same way that we are split a little bit. Um, and so the report specifically mentions that, uh, the cities in Orange County were split due to Voting Rights Act obligations in neighboring districts and to balance the population while considering the communities of interest. So I, um, you know, I, I completely understand that it seems confusing why a smaller city of our size would be split. Um, but, you know, unfortunately, that's the way the lines were drawn for the State Assembly.
I, I do think it was good. Uh, I'd like to thank the rest of the council doing the resolution. I think was helpful to get us in the other areas to kind of stick together with the beach cities. So I was happy to see that. Thanks.
And is, uh, there any news, uh, with regard to our city, uh, redistricting numbers and?
So for our city redistricting, that is actually going to be handled by our City Clerk and our City Attorney. So I would just defer to them.
Okay, Madam City Clerk. Um, any news on how that's going and when we might, um, see the results of that?
I'm going to defer this to the City Attorney Steele.
City Attorney Steele.
It's my, it's my turn, Mayor, I guess.
Uh,
we have, uh, as authorized by the City Council, retain a, um, demographic consultant to do the, the district analysis, which has been completed. And the City Clerk will be noticing, uh, public hearing, two public hearings before the subcommittee that you all appointed, um, over the next month or so. And they'll take that report and then make a recommendation to the City Council so that, uh, you can make your final decision, um, I would presume in March.
Okay, great, thank you, Greg. Okay, uh, if there are no other questions, thank you very much, Lauren, for the presentation.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll all try and understand it now.
Sounds good.
Uh, Public Communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding the items on the City Council agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, pardon me, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to provide comment were asked to send comments via email to the City Clerk or via the comment icon on the city website before 5:30 PM today. Comments provided via email by 5:30 today were distributed to the City Council and posted on the city website for review by the public. Email comments received after that time will be posted on the city's website and forwarded to the City Council after the meeting. Any documents for review should be sent to the City Clerk prior to the meeting for distribution. Those members of the public wishing to call in, can join the Zoom meeting from any electronic device by clicking the following link. Forward slash, forward slash US02web.zoom.us/j/84778336771. Or they may also call in by dialing 1-669-991-28. Double pound. Those members requesting to speak by phone or on Zoom can unmute by entering star six when called upon to speak. Once in the meeting, you'll be added to the waiting room until the public comment period begins. At that time, the commentator will be allowed to join the meeting to offer their comments. Commentators will be allotted five minutes to address the council. The ability to comment will be disabled when your allotted time has expired. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments or anyone on the call that wishes to address the council?
We have one email comment. And they, um, it has been distributed to council and made available on the city's website. We have two people on the call tonight. The first one is Toby Skonberger. And I'll ask you now to unmute.
Hello?
And you'll, yeah, and you'll have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Tony. Go ahead.
Um, I don't have anything to say. I'm here for a school assignment, if I'm being honest.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you for being honest and thank you for listening in tonight.
Thank you.
And I have also a loadie on the call.
Please go ahead. You have the floor. Hello?
Um, it looked like we may have lost the loadie. I don't see him in the meeting, him or her.
Okay.
In the meeting.
Isn't that, uh, then we are done with, uh, people waiting on the call?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the City Attorney's, uh, report. City Attorney, do you have anything to report tonight?
I have nothing additional, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Ingram, do you have, uh, anything to report tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening. I have two items to share tonight. First, as the council is aware, over 10 years ago, the state of California ceased operating local redevelopment agencies and successor agencies were formed to wind down remaining redevelopment obligations, which needless to say, especially for us, has been a very arduous process that included several actions and annual submissions of ongoing financial obligation reporting. The Seal Beach Successor Agency paid its final obligation in 2020, and our legal counsel, under the guidance of Craig Steele, worked with city staff, county council, and the Department of Finance to complete the wind down process. The final step of the wind down process was for the Seal Beach Shores Mulholland Park to refinance bonds, which were not due until 2035. The successor agency held a regulatory agreement with this debt prevented the successor agency from dissolving. However, in September of last year, as the council will recall, these bonds were refinanced and the regulatory agreement that bound the successor agency was no longer an impediment to final dissolution of our successor agency. As a result, I'm very pleased to report that at the January 18th meeting of the countywide oversight board last week, the board voted unanimously to dissolve the Seal Beach Successor Agency. Our interim finance director, Sherri Johnson, was present at this meeting on behalf of the city. And I want to especially highlight that the board commended the city of Seal Beach and noted that we are the first city in Orange County to have completed the dissolution process. The board further stated that other cities should follow our lead in terms of our successful dissolution process, given that dissolution is the goal of all successor agencies. I didn't want this huge accomplishment for our city to go unnoticed. And again, I want to thank and commend our finance team and express our gratitude to Craig Steele and his team for several years of their legal expertise and invaluable support to staff and the City Council that guided us through this process to completion. Second, I'm very pleased to report that the city issued a press release this morning announcing that we were notified last week by the Government Finance Officers Association that we have received a distinguished budget presentation award for our fiscal year 2122 annual operating budget document. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement by our city. In order to receive the budget award, the city was successful in satisfying nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well our city budget document serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. As the council knows, one of your highest priorities over the past two years through our strategic plan process, even throughout an ongoing pandemic, has been the enhancement of financial transparency and improvements to our annual budget process and budget document. And our achievement of this award highlights the dedication, commitment, and all of the hard work of our executive management team in partnership with our finance team and working alongside the council in successfully accomplishing this important goal together. Additionally, it's also important to note that this award recognizing our fiscal year 2122 operating budget document is an operating budget that includes funding general fund CIP projects for the first time out of projected revenue estimates without the use of general fund reserves. Again, this is another huge accomplishment for our city that deserves to be recognized and commended. That concludes my report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to council comments. This will be general council member comments and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. Um, let's start with Councilmember Moore.
Uh, no comments tonight, thanks.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Sistarsik.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in the last two weeks, I have attended a West Orange County Water Board meeting. Uh, at this meeting, they, uh, set out their draft budget for the next year. And, uh, I request that, uh, the city, uh, put that on a future agenda to be approved. So at our next meeting in April, uh, it, uh, we, I can vote to approve that. Um, I also attended an Airport Land Use Commission meeting. I attended a MAGA safety meeting over Zoom. And I listened to the Planning Commission meeting. And that's all for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Masalavet.
I have a short report. It's on vector control. And we're not having a big problem at this time of the year with mosquitoes, but, um, there are a couple of cases of Western Isle virus in humans in Orange County. So, um, you still need to watch out for those, those landscaping, water holes, and, um, depressions where water is, uh, ponding. And the other thing is that, um, there is a problem with those same mosquitoes biting animals, dogs in particular, and passing on heartworm. So, uh, for those of you who walk your dog out in public and, uh, on everybody's lawn and sidewalks, uh, keep an eye. Uh, make sure that, um, your animal was taken to the vet and checked for heartworms and make sure they're on medication because it has affected close to a half a dozen dogs so far in Orange County. So, uh, keep an eye out for that as well. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Verapapa.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing to report, but a great job on the two items mentioned tonight by City Manager Ingram. That was good to hear. Thank you for sharing that. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, I have a couple of comments. Uh, one is, uh, referencing, uh, Item D on our consent calendar tonight, in which we will be voting to, uh, have the second reading and adoption of Ordinance 1692 regarding mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. Uh, I just want to mention, because this is going to be something that's going to, um, be rolled out. Uh, and I want to point out that this is not something that is going to be a request of something that we should do because it's the right thing. This is a mandate, and it's a mandate that will ultimately have, uh, some real teeth to it. And I just want to make sure that folks pay attention to the information that gets, uh, put out as time goes by. Uh, it's something that we, we really need to do. But just as an example, um, I, this information came from a, um, a regional mayor's meeting that I attended via Zoom last Friday. And there, we had a consultant that really gave an excellent presentation about, you know, how this is going to roll out and what we're going to have to do. But at one point, um, there actually will be, um, trash can inspections that are done, where someone is going to be lifting the lids and checking to see that, uh, the waste has been put into the proper cans. And, um, there will be serious penalties, um, against the city and possibly individuals if, uh, if we don't comply. So just, you know, be aware of that, um, that that's coming and we need to pay attention to it. Um, I just wanted to bring up something that we want to keep an eye on as well. And I've been in contact with our police department, and that's the proliferation of, uh, of e-bikes. Not so much the fact that they are e-bikes, um, as an e-bike owner myself, but the way they're being used in town by a lot of the younger kids who are not wearing helmets, who are sort of, um, not obeying speed limits, riding on sidewalks, darting in and out of alleys, and some of the, uh, the larger bikes, uh, ridden by the, um, by older people, meaning 18 to who knows how old, um, that are treating them like off-road motorcycles. And the last thing we want to do is to have to create mandates. Um, so we're going to be working with PD on education, starting, you know, at the, uh, at the MAGA school level to make sure the kids understand that they need to be wearing a helmet, they shouldn't be riding double, they should be obeying all the traffic laws. And hopefully, by, uh, spreading information, we won't have to take further steps. But just something to keep in mind. And that is all the comments that I have this evening. Uh, next is the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. So I'll now call for a motion and a second for the consent calendar with the exception of Item I.
I'll move that item?
Okay. You have a second? All seconds. And now could we have a vote by roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalmak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Now, we're going to take up Item I. And, um, City Managers, their staff report on this.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm actually going to, uh, turn this, uh, item over to our project engineer, Denise Bailey. Denise?
Good evening. Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I'll be providing an update on the Tennis Center Improvement Project. Let me share my screen. All right. So, in my last presentation, I went over the 2011 Facility Condition Assessment Report. I want to remind the public that these 1970s buildings had 67 identified deficiencies, um, in this report. These clearing items need to be addressed to maintain the facility for the community and for its end users. These clearing items need to be addressed to maintain the facility for the community and for its end users. So after December 13, 2021 city council meeting, the city council approved, provided feedback on the conceptual design plan and awarded a budget amendment in the amount of 2.57 million for this project. The approved conceptual plans included reconfiguring the existing clubhouse to combine the clubhouse and locker rooms into one holistic building, demolish the existing locker room, update court lighting to LED for energy efficiency and to enhance visibility, and to renovate multipurpose building to allow for extra community programming. Now, the main purpose of this project is to renovate the facility to comply with current building code ADA requirement and provide necessary maintenance that the building requires. So the approved concept design plans were developed based on feedback from the tennis center staff, executive team, recreation department, public works department, and tennis center member surveys. Community input is a high priority. Given approval from tonight's professional service agreement with Gillis and Tachipan Architects, who designed our conceptual design plan, we will begin the design process. Now, incorporated in this design process will be facilitating community input opportunities. Those opportunities include city website project link, community workshops, depending on where we are at that time in the project, whether they be in person and then also have an ability to be available online as well. And membership surveys, so reaching out to the tennis center and pickleball members to get their feedback on the conceptual design when they're to that point for rendering, social media updates, and also an availability to provide comments back and designated project email address. So all of these will allow the public to provide their input on this design and have any questions answered that they have. That concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Denise. I wanted to thank Denise for walking me through the project and letting me ask lots of questions before the last meeting. After that meeting, I had a couple of members reach out to me that had questions. You know, I guess maybe they didn't listen to the meeting, but had questions where they thought the exercise room was maybe possibly going away. They thought maybe there wasn't going to be a kitchen, a lot of unknown about the project. So I just wondered if we could somehow have a link or something somewhere so that it would be easy for them to click in and view what's planned. I'm happy to hear that there are opportunities for community input because I've heard from a couple where, you know, they maybe weren't sure whether the plans had been done by a company that does athletics, that sort of thing. Questions that I can't answer. So I would be happy if, in addition to a link or a survey, there's some way that, I understand now there's like 300 members, so that's a lot of people that are very interested and possibly have questions. Maybe they could get information on the project and also possibly pass on questions. And I know right now this is designed, but as construction moves forward, I'm sure there might be people who are, you know, wanting to reach out about issues with that, too. So I also had a couple of questions. Some of these were mine and some of them were kind of put forth on members. This design, when it comes to lighting, is that something that's determined in this design? Or is that lighting going to be an issue in a future, in the construction project?
Yeah, so currently, thank you very much, Councilmember, for those questions. So currently, we've only gone through the concept design, a very high level of just getting the project approved. We do have set aside money in this project to do a full lighting study. So that is to look at every single court individually by a professional to look at what the tennis courts need versus the pickleball and reassigning those lights. Because currently, they have the original 1970s lighting. So we would retake a look at the entire court lighting as a whole. And then, as you spoke about, as far as, you know, community outreach or being able to ask questions, we will be setting up right after this professional service agreement gets awarded and starting the design process of setting up its own individual email account so people can email their questions in and also setting up the other opportunities for the community outreach that I stated before.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. I think some are interested in, you know, giving input early in the process as opposed to after the design is done. So that, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Some of the questions on lighting are possibly, are probably, or possibly later. I did have interest in, because I had a resident who was playing at Heather Park and he was not very happy with the LEDs that went in there. I don't know if it was the direction of lighting, the color of lighting, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody is happy with the end result before the project completion. But that looks like it's in the future. But someone did have a question about the light overflow possibly affecting residents on Basswood or Astor or possibly even Blue Bell. Are they shielded or is it downcast or the freeway maybe even? How do we? Is that in this design or will that be in our future lighting study that we have?
So that will be in the lighting study as a part of this design. But this design process is estimated to take, you know, around a year. So right now, we're just at the concept design phase. When we get to those kind of questions, it will be included in the community outreach once we have renderings done and kind of looking at those questions. But it's not going to, you know, change so drastically where it's, you know, like you said, affecting other residents or the freeway. Those are the things that would be taken into account during the lighting study.
Okay, all right. And I just had one other comment on design and I think I already spoke to you about it. It had to do with the fact that the locker rooms in the clubhouse that will now become the only bathrooms in the future. I'm just a little concerned about making sure there's privacy in there because it won't just be tennis players that will be using those. But if we do have a rental of the clubhouse for anniversary party or a meeting or we have children in there for camps, they will be using those bathrooms. And I was just have some, you know, want to make sure that everything is private and people aren't surprised by walking into a locker room. So that is, I think, my only other comment now. How about technology? Is technology something that's in the, like, a year away, too, that we're talking about?
During this design, technology will be looked at in conjunction with our kind of IT team as well. So that would be something that's looked at a part of this design.
Okay, so that was, it was just more like, you know, in relation to security cameras and internet and that sort of thing. I just wondered if that is considered, that's considered now. And one other question, will there be washing machines? Well, I actually have another question. Washing machines somewhere?
Yes, currently, the conceptual design plan does include that. As something that was already in the facility before and being moved to a different location.
Okay. And another question, somebody asked me, said, it looks like there's lots of openness and glass, but will they still be able to have a TV and enjoy sports? You know, they watch tennis events and things like that in there, too.
Yeah, we'll have capability for either viewing or meeting, have, you know, IT put in the building, definitely.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your extra time and effort to answer these questions. And I appreciate the public comment capabilities that you're setting up. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, well, thank you very much, Denise. We appreciate it. And now I will call for a motion and a second on item I.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Kalnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalaba, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good. That passes 5-0. Thank you. So we have no public hearings this evening. We have no unfinished or continued business and we have no new business. So therefore, I am pleased to adjourn the city council to Monday, February 14, 2022, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. So thank you very much for attending and everybody have a good rest of the week. Thank you.